Very good. Well, welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the August meeting of your Lewisville Town Council. So glad you could be with us tonight. A lot of familiar faces. Good to see you folks. Glad you're here. Some faces we hadn't seen in a while, so we're always glad when we see old friends come by. We'll begin our meeting, as we customarily do, with a roll call of council members.
Good evening. I'm Councilmember Jane Welch.
Good evening. David Smitherman.
I'm Mike Horn. Usually there's somebody there.
Hi, I'm Kenz Sadler.
Oh, yeah. Oh, he's there. He's up there somewhere. Okay. Happy Thursday, Melissa Hunt.
I'm Fred Franklin.
Very good. We also have with us tonight our town manager, our town attorney, our town planner and assistant town director, our town planner one or assistant planner. Let's go around the room. We also have our communications specialist in the back. We have our town clerk, and we have our town finance director. Is there anybody left in town hall? We're all here. Very good. Glad everybody's with us tonight. We'll begin our meeting this evening with an invocation by Councilmember Jane Welch, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember David Smitherman. Please stand and join us if you're able.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for us gathering here tonight. First of all, we praise you as our Savior, and we thank you that we are able to be a town in our beloved America, the town of Lewisville, where once Speaker of the House Tip O'Neill said, "All politics are local." Yes, that's where your roads are taken care of, where your community activities are, where your health and safety are a priority. We thank you for all those who contribute to that, and we work together as one for our beloved town. And yes, some things really take a long time, Lord. Help us to remember what Thomas Jefferson once said, "The wills of government turn slowly," and that is because we need the input of as many people as we can to know that we are doing the will of the people. So guide us tonight in our decisions. Bless all that are here. And again, thank you, Lord. We praise you. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jane, thank you for bringing up Tip O'Neill's name. A young freshman who just came to Congress was getting a lot of pressure from his constituents to do this and do that, and a lot of pressure from his lobbyists to do this or do that. He went to Tip O'Neill, who was Speaker then, and he said, "What should I do? What should I do?" And he said, "Son, just do what's right, and the politics will take care of themselves." By the way, I'll plug his book. He had a great book with a lot of tipisms in it, so it was fun to read. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we don't have any changes to our agenda this evening, do we? Very good. If not, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for the night.
So move.
Second.
Franklin makes the motion. Mr. Smitherman makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Focus on the consent agenda. I know we rarely do this, but I would like to pull Item A off for separate discussion. And if there are no objections, we can amend the consent agenda like that. All right. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The remaining items on the consent agenda include Item 2B, approval of agenda briefing minutes from the July 6, 2023, meeting; Item Number 2C, approval of closed session minutes, also from July 6, 2023; and 2D, approval of regular meeting minutes from the meeting on July 13, 2023. The last item remaining on the consent agenda, this is the 2023 meeting schedule revision, which includes the addition of the Public Art Committee meetings and the deletion of the December 7 council briefing. And that's what remains of the consent agenda. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Councilmembers, you did have an opportunity to review the consent agenda materials. I do want to call your attention to our financial statements, and as our finance director would say to us, this is preliminary and un-audited, but it still is worth pulling out and mentioning it separately. I want to call your attention just to one specific aggregated number. We like to feel that the town of Lewisville, when we say the town of Lewisville is in excellent financial shape, and it's because of what this council and previous councils have done in terms of managing our finances and doing a lot of the right things to make sure our town stays healthy. Plus, we have a growing tax base. So we have been able to assemble, amass, if you want to use that word, a very healthy financial position. And just briefly, looking at it today, in our capital reserve fund, our capital project fund, the money in our American Rescue Plan Fund, and our MSD Fund, and our general fund, which is encumbered, and in our general fund balance itself, we have almost $13.5 million. Now, this is money that, some of it has been allocated for projects, some of it is encumbered, and we can use it how we wish. Some of it is for some very specific purposes, but sitting today, we have, even despite a settlement that we had to do for $1,008, we still have a very, very healthy financial balance, and I want to congratulate this council and all the previous councils and the staff for doing such a great job to move this forward. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Welch makes the motion. Ms. Hunt makes the second. I heard the voice down there. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. All righty. Stacy, you have an important guest with us.
I do. All right. Good evening, council. Tonight with us, we have a very exciting guest. As all of you are aware, we, thanks to you all, were able to do a project this year, an update to our Unified Development Ordinance. We have hit the ground running, and tonight we wanted to have a kind of a kickoff to let you guys see kind of what we're going to be up to for the next year approximately. Also letting the public see kind of what this project is all about, where we're starting, where we're going, and that sort of thing. So Mr. Kelly Klepper is here tonight with us from our consulting firm that we have hired, Kimley Horn. He comes with a wealth of knowledge, a great team, two of which of those individuals, I won't steal his thunder too much, but that have worked with us previously on our comprehensive plan, our Lewisville Tomorrow that we adopted last year. So we're very excited to have him here with us tonight, and, like I said, to hit the ground running and for a very exciting project to really benefit our town, to continue to guide growth, to continue to do what's right for our residents. So I will turn it over to Kelly.
Thank you, Stacy. For the record, good evening, mayor, members of council. My name is Kelly Klepper with Kimley Horn. As Stacy said, I will say first and foremost, it's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. It's always a pleasure to have great partners like the town, have a longstanding relationship, and, you know, we believe that, you know, one, being able to continue that relationship with the rewriting, the update of the UDO is just one more further step in helping you achieve your vision. So with that, I'm going to go through almost somewhat of a brief presentation, but what I will say is, if you've got any specific questions along the way, please feel free to ask, if that's appropriate, Mr. Mayor. We want to make this as interactive as possible. Also to let you know that as we're working through this process, there's going to be a lot of interaction going on between my team and the city staff, excuse me, town staff. I say that too often sometimes, but also with the stakeholders, the residents, and those opportunities to be able to help educate the residents here within the town limits. Because ultimately, there, again, at the end of the day, this is the group that's going to have to utilize, implement, and fulfill the comments and components of the UDO. On the image right there, you'll see a couple of familiar faces, of course, mine standing in front of you. But Alyssa Flandemeyer, who is my deputy project manager, Alyssa has been with me for a period of time. She is helping me with the facilitation and the update of the UDO. The two faces on the bottom, Mr. Jonathan Whitehurst, who I know you all are very familiar with, as well as Ms. Laura Hamilton. Those folks are, I'll call it, also key staff members. This isn't just the only four people that are working on the update itself. We have a number of other folks, including our transportation engineer, our engineering partner, as well as other planners and landscape architects, reviewing and updating the UDO and providing updates as we're going. And you hear me say "updates" quite a bit. It's not just an update, but it's a relook at the comments. It's the implementation of your comprehensive plan. It's looking at best planning and engineering practices, things that we understand may be beneficial, but also being able to vet those through the town staff as well as this body. So here's a quiz. Which of these is tied to the code and which is tied to your comprehensive plan? Land use, development form, or the overall processes? All three. If I had a candy bar or a sucker, I'd be throwing them out. All three are inherently tied together. Why? Because the comprehensive plan is based off of that vision. That vision helps formulate the development form, also identifies the processes that we need to do with specific land use. And there again, that all gets rolled into the UDO at the end of the day, and that is where the rubber is hitting the road from your comprehensive plan. You have a very really great comprehensive plan. I'm a little biased towards it, to say the least, but it's robust. It's forward-thinking. It's visionary. It lays out some great thoughts and ideas and plans to move forward. A couple of those key implementation goals that you'll see on the screen right there, talk about the process we're doing right now, creating a new and updated Unified Development Ordinance, and that's going to implement your future land use. It also encourages those land use patterns and builds upon those bones that you already have within the town. Also kind of looking at a number of broad-based ideas and criteria, including the engineering, the parks, the open space, as well as housing components itself. So, some of you may be asking, I know probably less so of you all, but some in the audience or some that may be watching later on, what is a UDO? Basically, it's a Unified Development Ordinance. That is your code. That is your guiding document. That is the statements and design principles, everything from the land use, how we do and develop within the downtown, the overlays, our building setbacks, our parking standards, architectural review features, buffers, trees. Anything that you can think of that's actually implementable within the town is addressed within the UDO itself. So as Stacy said, it's about a 14-month process, or 12 to 14-month process, that we will be undertaking as part of this. So what is our overall approach? Well, part of it is to not only look at what we call the UDO assessment. If you've never had a chance to kind of look at your UDO, this is what you have. It's about 400-plus pages, lots and lots of text, lots of information in there, but we also start to think about things a little differently. So we do this assessment. We're also considering the components under 160D. That is your state standards for, that governs land use, development, and zoning. So then, as part of that, we're also going to be looking at a draft, creating a draft as well as the final. We're going to be looking at your zoning map. We're going to be doing the public outreach, and then also creating an administrative manual that's going to be used by your staff to help understand and better be able to describe and implement what the UDO does, what steps, and what processes. So kind of that how-to Reader's Digest version of the UDO moving forward. So there again, what are those considerations? Public participation. There's great opportunities for the public to provide input, provide their comments. I know there was a lot that was provided as part of the comprehensive plan. We're building off of that. Staff feedback. We've had a great day talking with Stacy and some other folks today, understanding exactly what are the things that are most pressing to them right now. What are some of those interpretations? They're also looking at the 160D components, best practices, and then more importantly, our knowledge of this area, the current code, and also of the Lewisville Tomorrow, the comprehensive plan. As a quick backdrop, I have been working in planning, development, and redevelopment for over 32 years. I do work all across the southeast. I came out of the public sector. I've written a number of codes, starting to kind of think about things, especially more so from Stacy and the staff's perspective, being on that side of the table. And that's one of the things that we want to make sure we're bringing forward as part of this plan update, excuse me, code update. You have a lot of pieces and parts that have kind of gone into the formation of the UDO, all of which are integral portions of this, and it's everything from the comprehensive plan to your visioning, to the zoning districts, looking at the overlays, the overall development form, the function, the building heights, how we measure things, all of which gets rolled into the UDO at the end of the day. So what is the opportunity? So although I've sat there and said, "I've come to you with 32 years," we're not coming in with any preconceived ideas. It'd be very simple for some groups to come in here and say, "Well, you know what? We know best. Here's your new UDO. Merry Christmas." To the contrary, we're just sitting down and we're listening. We're providing comments. We're asking the questions. We're asking those folks that are utilizing this, what works, what doesn't. What's the opportunity? What's the challenge? Is this clear? So we're not saying we're going to throw the baby out with the bathwater, as I like to joke, but we are going to be taking a deep dive into the UDO as you currently have it. So when we first started looking at this, we started to identify, and some of you may be going like, "Well, Kelly, I could have told you this one yourself." The standards are scattered throughout the UDO. You actually have to go to multiple sections within the UDO to find a general standard, and it may travel across multiple components. So then you're looking at one portion of Section 2. You may have to go to a different section, and by that time, you've either had to pull out multiple pages or you've lost your train of thought. Limited graphics. Graphics are the key to a lot of this. They say a picture is worth 1,000 words. We believe that graphics tell the story as well. And then also, more importantly, we need to be able to update and reflect what is being provided as part of your comprehensive plan. One of the challenges, of course, that we have is how do we tie the map on the left, which is the comprehensive plan, to the map on the right? That's your county zoning map, or, excuse me, the city-county zoning map, showing all those different areas. Now, the first time I saw this map, I took a look, and I actually asked my folks. I said, "I think you made a mistake. There's too many different colors on here. There's too many boxes," and it was, "Nope, that's actually correct." So part of this is also to look at, where do we have redundancies? What are some simplification without kind of giving away the farm? But more importantly, how do we better implement the current zoning districts and the standards that you have, trying to right-size it for your community? So your current zoning districts, there again. I had to ask my staff, "I think you made a mistake. You grabbed the wrong code," and they said, "Nope, this is it." I asked Stacy the same question. She says, "Nope, that's it." So how do we tie those current zoning districts that you have within the UDO to those character areas that are within the comprehensive plan? And there's a couple of things that we have to look at. We're looking at those design and development intent standards within the character areas, and how do those relate back to those zoning districts? Where do we see the overlap? Where do we see the gaps? Where do we see where the items are doing this, and we're missing the boat? So there again, part of the discussion is exactly what do we need to do and look at with respect to some of your current zoning districts themselves? So what is a possible approach? Throwing this out there is big picture. This is where we start to get the head nods or the head shakes, one way or the other. You know, your existing layout is there again. It's kind of haphazard. It's kind of scattered. We've kind of taken a quick look at it and talking with Stacy and some of the other folks, and in preparation for tonight, said, "Well, you know, how about we think about this? We look at a little different logical order of the way the code could be identified and laid out." It's a code. It's a UDO, but it still has to tell the story. It still has to be a logical transition and progression from A to B. So there again, this is out there as part of one of those items for staff to be thinking about and going, "Yeah, we could see how this works," and it builds off of previous sections, while also eliminating some of the redundancies that we see within the current regulations themselves. Speaking of graphics, you've got some interesting designs and graphics and standards within your code. One of the things that we've found to be very insightful there again are graphics such as this. When we're talking about measurements and building heights and livable spaces, and, you know, two and a half stories under the one district that you have are 48 feet versus 60 feet, it's very clear that, okay, how is it being measured? Well, text is one thing. An image actually describes it best. If we're talking about build-two zones, which you do define within certain districts, what does that actually look like to the person who picks up the code for the first time? So there's a way that we can kind of start to reorganize and make this a simpler, easier-to-use, easier-to-follow document. Again, the graphics. The graphics tell the story. How do we define a front, side, or rear setback? What are we talking about with the yard? What do we have? How do we define, especially with respect to corner lots? There again, great definitions in text within the UDO, but to the layperson, how do you visualize that? And then being able to start laying out some of the code components in a table that's a little bit easier to use and follow. You do a pretty good job with this portion right here, your use definitions and your definitions. However, you've got to go across three different sections to be able to find some of the characteristics, some of the accessory uses, some of the definitions, some of the standards, and some of the other things. So there's a way that we can consolidate some of that, but also, there again, without losing the consistency that you have. So there again, trying to make it a little bit user-friendly and going to one portion of the document versus two, or in some cases, three. Signage. Signage is a big deal, also with the graphics. It's very simple and easy for us to be able to come in looking at your current sign ordinance and say, "This is what this sign looks like." When we talk about wall signs, monument signs, freestanding, when we talk about awning signs, being able to clearly identify what the intent is, how those are applied, and how the measurements occur. We also would recommend, at this point, you know, the graphics that you see along the bottom, those are not regulatory in nature. They're advisory. They're just to give you that visual understanding of, okay, this is how this could be implemented within a real-world setting. You know, your town attorney is probably looking at this going, "You can't implement that or regulate that." But, you know, there again, those are for informational purposes only. The actual code component will have the specific standard, the sign type, and how everything is measured, so that if there is an issue or a component, we're citing a specific section, and it goes through, you go through the process at that point. Landscaping and buffering. Looking at your buffering standards, like I said, you have a pretty good buffer setup right now. Talking with Laura, our landscape architect, she said, "Well, what if?" And this is where we almost start to act like five-year-olds, or, you know, if you've got a child or a grandchild, what's the thing that they normally will do to you five times? Ask you why. And I try to do that with my team. We do it with this. Being able to illustrate those buffer graphics so you understand, if there is a wall, where's the wall actually placed? Is it adjacent to the road or is it interior to the property itself? What does the spacing look like as far as the trees within that setback, within those portions? And then more importantly, starting to identify, what are those trees that we identify with species? Those large canopy trees, the understory trees, the shrubs, and that way, there is a defined list that, you know, Laura, using her expertise and license within the state of North Carolina, can say, "These are the types of trees and shrubs that are hardy, that will achieve what you're trying to do from a landscape buffering and an overall visual aesthetic component." So what's the timeline? Well, in a very simplified manner, as Stacy said, you know, we're on the clock. We've already started doing some of this work. We're here tonight. We will be coming back before you a couple of times, but this gives you the generalized layout that we identified and negotiated both with Stacy and with the town manager as part of the contractual process. The contract itself lays out a series of workshops, both virtual as well as in person. It also lines out a series of public hearings before the planning board, as well as this body, so that there is an understanding exactly where we're going to have those public hearings and what some of that schedule is. There again, we're going to be working diligently with staff to make sure that these targets are hit, and I'm sure that Stacy will let me know if we're starting to sleep in any manner. So with that, we're here to answer any questions. We're excited to be here. We're extremely happy that the town and the staff have the trust in Kimley Horn to bring us in on this next phase, and we're looking forward to being a partner with you for the next year.
Thank you, Kelly. Councilmembers, any questions?
Go ahead. I have a couple of questions. Thank you. That was very informative. You answered my question regarding the signage, and I do like the, any visual aids. I think that's very nice and will be very helpful in the simplification. But can we expect to see changes in the ordinances throughout this process that you guys will bring before council? Or as you're starting to look at language and things of that nature, what can we expect as far as that's concerned?
Sure. Great question, and I will say, the one thing that we were tasked with was not just rewriting the existing code. So there's going to be items that we've already started to look at, and, you know, we'll be talking, of course, with the town attorney from a science perspective, with compliance with the U.S. Supreme Court on Reed. There's some things that we're kind of looking at going, "Hmm, let's think about that." There's other portions in here, whether it's the removal of some zoning districts, changes in some of those districts to comply and implement your comprehensive plan. New standards may be proposed as part of that. So we're going to provide a technical report. We're going to say, "These are the items that we recommend." We're going to vet that through staff and then bring that before you all.
Thank you. And then I think maybe one more. When you talked about best practices, can you expand on that a little bit as far as, do you look at best practices amongst other municipalities that are similar-sized or larger, or what do you do when you look at best practices?
Great question. So the great thing about this is, is, one, we're going to right-size the code for the town. That's the first goal we have. We will be looking at similar-sized communities that are forward-thinking, visionary. We're not going to use, and I'm not going to say it's a four-letter word, we're not going to be looking at Raleigh to go, "Okay, Raleigh's got this, and we're going to bring it here, and guess what? You need to apply that." There may be aspects from Raleigh that we think that may be applied here, but there again, right-sizing that. So looking at the communities that we've worked in throughout, you know, the state of North Carolina and South Carolina and Tennessee, where there's a similar size and similar approach, similar population, similar geographic situation, those are the things that we're bringing to this community.
Okay. Thank you. And then last one. How detail, when you start looking at language in these things, how detailed will your team go? Will they start looking at the end or language? I mean, very specific? Y'all will kind of comb through every single word?
Absolutely. And it's funny, because I was picking Stacy's brain this afternoon on a couple of components and just saying, "Am I reading this correctly?" And it's like, yes. So there is a, my team hates it when I do this. I'm old school. I sit there and I start reading. I've got a pen. I'm marking things up. I'm looking at the grammar. I'm looking at the punctuation. I'm looking at the word flow. And I'm looking at, is there a comma versus a no comma that may in fact change the interpretation?
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Yes. Mr. Clifford, thank you for being here this evening. We're very familiar with your firm. Excited that you're working with us. Couple of questions I had for you, please. One concern we have in our town is about the western part of town, how it may be developed, and I noticed you said you talked to staff today about some priorities. Could you hit on some of the priorities that were agreed upon?
Well, just to keep in mind, there's nothing that's been quote-unquote "agreed upon." It's a vetting process, so it's what are the big-picture items? What are those items that are most concerning right now? And, you know, as you're looking to the growth to the west, is that going, you know, within the watershed? Because there's a whole set of different standards that have to be applied there versus other places. As you start looking at other, going towards the main highway, what's going on there from the roundabouts, from the new road that's being designed and being implemented? So there again, there's a lot that we're, and we're looking, going west, what is the growth potential? How does it, and more importantly, how does it relate to your comprehensive plan?
Thank you.
That is the document that you all have adopted.
Thank you. Another question. I know you will have a lot of community involvement. How many meetings do you expect to have where the public is invited?
Well, the one thing I will say is, I'd have to go back and pull the agreement, and I will get back to you on that. Just because we're not here doesn't mean that there's not comments to be provided to Stacy and to get to us. We consider this an open process from this point to the adoption. So, you know, like tonight's presentation is going to be posted on the town's website. As we're bringing information through, it's going to be posted out there. We've got our formal outreach components. So, you know, if somebody reviews this tomorrow, they can email Stacy at the email that you see there and say, "We'd like more information on this," and that gets to us. Stacy, do you remember off the top of your head, because I'm trying to remember?
I would say at least three.
At least three, because I know there was the three formal public hearings, and I believe that there was at least one or two interim meetings, both with this group as well as the, kind of, I'll say, a joint workshop slash formal presentation.
Thank you. I know with that in mind, I think we have the most turnout when the people are actually invited to see the graphics and have comments then instead of the individual ones, which are also, of course, very welcome. Also, you did not mention environmental emphasis, and I wondered how you write that as you're doing the UDO revision.
Anything that's required under 160D, anything that's in your current UDO we're looking at. Just because I didn't maybe necessarily mention the environmental components, whether it's, and I know we have to be careful, because tree preservation, you can't do things to components of the state statutes. But conservation and preservation of those major tree areas, that's a big emphasis, and that's something that Laura looks at. I also have a couple of our environmental scientists that look at the native habitats as far as, and as I like to joke, and they get mad at me, the Bugs and Bunnies aspects of things as well. So that is a portion of this review.
We do have a committee that is involved with that, as we do other boards and committees. Will you be working closely too with our committees?
Don't have chances.
Yeah, I was going to say, you know, the one thing I will say is, if there is a group that's wanting to meet, if there's a group that wants to provide input, you know, those are the stakeholders. Get in contact with Stacy. Stacy will help kind of coordinate and facilitate those discussions, because we want to hear. I'd rather know right now or in the next couple of months what the concerns are versus we get back up here and the next thing we know is we have somebody showing up in a red t-shirt going, "No."
Thank you. We're, you know, all about involvement and appreciate your remarks tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Councilmembers? Doctor, anything from you?
No, I'm good, Mike. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. All righty, Kelly. We look forward to working with you. This is going to be an exciting process for all of us. I know if our mayor pro tem and former planning board chair was here, Jean Marie Foster, she would say, "It's about darn time we got started on this."
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Of course.
All right. I'd like to begin tonight by just telling you a little bit about the award program. The program for the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting was established by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada in 1945. It was created to encourage and assist state and local governments to go beyond the minimum reporting requirements of generally accepted accounting principles. It does require that state and local governments prepare annual comprehensive financial reports that evidence the spirit of transparency and full disclosure. And of course, it strives to recognize individual governments that do so. And of course, it strives to recognize individual governments that do succeed in achieving that goal. The goal of the program is not to assess the health of participating governments, but rather to ensure that users of their financial statements have the information they need to do so themselves. Reports that are submitted to the program are reviewed by selected members of the professional staff of the Government Finance Officers Association and the Special Review Committee. This committee includes individuals with expertise in public sector financial reporting, including financial statement preparers, independent auditors, academics, and other finance professionals. We did enter our annual comprehensive financial report into the program for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2022, and I'm pleased to report that we have been awarded this certificate. And if I may, I'm going to read just a blurb from the letter that we did receive from them. The Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada has awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to the town of Lewisville for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2022. The report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure, to clearly communicate its financial story, and to motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. And I will say, this is the 18th year that the town has received this award. And I did bring it with me this year. It weighs about 200 pounds, made of solid rock. But you can see it's, we get a medallion each year that we get the award, and this is our full 10 years' worth.
That's wonderful.
Pam, it feels like somebody should be handing that to you and we should get a picture of this whole thing.
Well, let's present it to the town.
Yes.
Well, Veronica, can you get a picture of the, of the, of maybe Pam with the award? You know, this is a big deal. It sounds like we're talking in terms of just financial, financial reporting, but this is a big deal for the town. It's one of the reasons why earlier we had talked about the healthy balance that we have and the financial practices that we've used. And this is a recognition of all the hard work, not only, not only by our finance department, but also by councils and staff and making sure that we have an opportunity to, even an opportunity to submit and be considered. But the fact that we have now won for so many years is a great compliment to you, Pam. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, let's see, this will be our, what year?
Eighteenth.
And how long have you been with us?
Almost eight years.
Any questions for Pam? Thank you.
No. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we will have two opportunities to address the council tonight during our public forums. This is the first one. If anybody has anything on their mind that you'd like to speak with the council about, come forward, stand at the podium, say your name and address, and take three minutes and tell us what you think. Anyone wish to speak? For all. All righty, thank you. There'll be another opportunity at the end of the meeting to do the same thing. Dora, you have some appointments for us.
Yes, sir. Before the council is an appointment order 2023-008 for the council's consideration to appoint Miriam Selby to the Lewisville Beautification Committee.
Very good. Council members, you've had a chance to look at Ms. Selby's background. Do we have any questions for Dora, or do we have a motion, please?
Motion for approval.
We have a motion by Ms. Hunt, a second by Dr. Sadler. Any discussion? All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Congratulations, Ms. Selby.
The other appointment order before the council tonight is order 2023-009, appointing Andrew Flanagan to the Zoning Board of Adjustment as an alternate member, and this would be fulfilling the unexpired term of Jennifer Hill.
Very good. Any questions for Dora? Not while entertaining a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Franklin makes a motion, Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any discussion? All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. Flanagan. Stacy, I believe you have our next item.
Tonight before us, we have a conventional subdivision request. We're calling it B-Roth Circle. That is where it is located. The case number is LPBR 2023-001. So a little bit of background, this is a major subdivision request. We call it allowed by right. It is a use that is allowed in this particular zoning district for a single-family development. We call it a conventional major subdivision because it does have to simply follow the rules and regulations of our Chapter D in our Unified Development Ordinance, that's the subdivision ordinance for major subdivisions. And the reasoning behind this is because when a, when the zoning is already there, when we do not have to change zoning, public hearing is not required, notifications are not required, because the use is already allowed by our Unified Development Ordinance. So you can see the process for approval. They come through a preliminary staff review, they go through our technical review committee, that's agencies such as NCDOT, City County Utilities, the Fire Marshal's Office, Stormwater Review, and a few others. So once they go through technical review committee, they do go to the planning board. Planning board makes a recommendation to town council, and that's where we end up tonight with final approval by town council, if you so choose. A little bit about the property, it is 33.88 acres total. There is going to be a total of 27 lots. Eight of those lots are going to be accessed off of a proposed road, a new road to be built, that will be called Corumay Lane. The other 19 lots are to be accessed off of the already existing B-Roth Circle. That is a town-maintained street that is already a public dedicated right-of-way. So again, total 27 lots. The unique thing about this property is even though it is in the RS 30 zoning district, that's a residential, single-family zoning district, the minimum lot size of 30,000 square feet, the developer has chosen to do a large lot development, which means all the lots are greater than 40,000 square feet. Per our ordinance, whenever you have a large lot development and it meets those density requirements, curb, gutter, and sidewalks are not required, because the purpose of a large lot subdivision is more of a conservation-based, less impervious surface, that sort of thing. So when all the lots are greater than 40,000, even though they want to keep their 30,000 square foot zoning district, that's why our rezoning is not required. They still meet that requirement. In this development, we'll get to the site plan in just a minute, but they are proposing street trees along the portion of B-Roth Circle where the new lots are to front and also along Corumay Lane. It will be served by public water, and the lots will be served by private septic systems on the individual lots. Town is of the opinion that the request is in the conformance of the Unified Development Ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and legacy for the area. So before you right now is a map of the area. You can see in the yellow hashed location on the map in front of you, that is where the development is to take place. Again, along B-Roth Circle, a little bit of it is on Brookbank, but no lots are going to be accessed off of that. They'll be all accessed off B-Roth and then the new Corumay Lane. So the project is located within the Yakon River WS4 watershed area. Again, all of the proposed lots are 40,000 square feet or greater, and again, since it's large lot, curb and gutter and sidewalks are not required. The developer does have to follow all the subdivision requirements of Chapter D, Section 4, that is our subdivision ordinance in the UDO, and also all the TRC comments that are, they have to remedy those, any, any comments that come back through the TRC review. Again, it does meet the standards of the Unified Development Ordinance. So you can see in front of you now that that is the proposed subdivision, the total of 27 lots, and you can see, I don't have a pointer or anything, but, yeah, it's not pointing, the new extension of Corumay Lane that is to access eight of those lots. The little dots that you see along the road, those are the proposed street trees. It does encompass some environmental areas where the required buffers around those drainage areas and those streams are going to be met. That is being met by the Unified Development Ordinance, the requirements that we have for those buffer yards and everything like that, that have to be served around those sensitive areas. So lastly, the planning board did vote on this to recommend approval of the subdivision at their June 14th meeting. Again, just for the record, the following requirements will be followed. The street tree requirement, they are already proposing to meet this requirement, but the, for the record, the requirement is one tree per every 45 linear feet of the center line, which is the street, plus one additional tree per lot in conventional subdivisions. They will go through the city of Winston-Salem for the erosion control permits. Again, the TRC comments will be remedied, and then lastly, the stormwater management permits will be obtained through the town of Lewisville. We require those to be attained through us before they are allowed to be issued erosion control permits, building or any zoning permits, when we get to the final plat stage. So I'll be happy to take any questions that you have about the project.
Council members? Doctor?
I don't have any questions, I'll move approval.
Very good. Ms. Hunt, you have a question?
Yeah, I have one question. What's the, what's the length of your, that cul-de-sac area, that, that Corumay?
Um, I don't, I don't know. Do you know that off the top of your? 499 feet. The engineer and, and property owner is here, if you have any questions for them as well. I should have mentioned that earlier.
All right. Thank you.
I'm just a little concerned that that's a major creek that goes down there right now, and I've seen where there's been significant wash on the Brookbank side. So whatever they're doing is not going to, it's going to make it better, I would say.
They will be required to go through stormwater review, and that will be assessed at that time. If there is any crossing that they have to do, they will have to obtain the proper permits to do so, even, even for a residential driveway permit. So those, those, there's remedies in place to try to protect those areas.
Okay, thank you.
Speaking of stormwater, I guess the thing that gets me on the, on the deal, and I'm okay with this development, but all that water is going to go right through my farm, because everything drains through that basin, and this is just another ridge crest, all those developments there have turned it to where it, you know, it's just, it's hard to manage anymore. It's, I want to throw up my hands. And as it, as it continues on the Robin Hood area, that open area that you see across there, and this is just up above it, all that water's eventually coming down to Mill Creek and also, that's the only comment I want to make about this, is just more runoff is coming my way.
I'm sure you all will be sensitive to that as you begin to develop.
Well, it's, it's, every time you put a roof up, I mean, in a drive, a paved driveway, you're going to get more runoff. And there's no, there's, you know, no stormwater retention for this type of project here. It's just infeasible to do, so, yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes. Could you speak to building materials, and are there any drawings or photographs of what these homes may look like?
We are not allowed to require or recommend building materials or facade requirements for residential development, yeah, so.
Mayor, will we stand on the motion and so forth?
We have a motion on the floor, we're just getting ready to conclude discussion. Questions?
Did you get a second on it?
Not yet. There are no other questions? Very good, we have a motion on the floor by Dr. Sadler, is there a second?
Oh, a second.
Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any additional discussion? All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous. Mr. Biroth, thank you for your investment in our community.
Thanks to you all.
All righty, Pam, I believe you have the next four items.
Yes. The first item is Ordinance 2023-030. This is for the formation of a capital project ordinance for the Lewisville-Vayanna Multipurpose Path, and it has an initial budget of $1,766,453.
Any questions for Pam? Again, council members, we discussed all these at briefing, so we're, we understand we're kind of moving money around from one place to another just to make sure that we, we will qualify next year for the Certificate of Excellence.
That's correct.
One quick question, though, just since I was not at briefing. This is just to establish the fund, the project fund, correct?
That is correct, and which contains the actual budget.
Currently, you're projecting $1.5 million is going to be needed.
1.7 is the current budget.
Okay.
You know, always subject to change. Of course, we can amend it later on if we need to.
Right, but we're not funding the 1.7 tonight. We're, we are going to move some money, but...
We are going to fund 20%, which is our match, our town match.
Okay.
80% of that 1.7 million will be federal funding.
Okay, all right, thank you. I understand now, let's, let's move forward.
Any other questions for Pam? Not while entertaining a motion, please.
Motion for approval?
Ms. Welch maybe makes the motion, I think, and Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any discussion? All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous.
Okay, the next item is actually a budget amendment to our annual operating budget. It's Ordinance 2023-031. This is to transfer $188,100 from the sidewalks, bike paths, and greenways capital reserve fund to the newly created Lewisville-Vayanna Multipurpose Path Capital Project Fund. The 188,100, this represents part of that 20% match that the town is making to the project.
Entertaining a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion, Mr. Smithman makes the second. Any discussion? All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next item's...
I'm waiting for the last aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Doctor, I'm assuming you're an aye?
I was on mute, sorry, aye.
He's on mute.
That is unanimous. Our attorney would, was glaring at me, saying you didn't get all seven, or didn't get all participants who were at the meeting in that vote. Very good, thank you. That is unanimous, it passes.
Okay, the next item, anytime there's any activity to a capital reserve fund, then the capital reserve ordinance needs to be amended to reflect that, so there's some record-keeping to it. So we have Ordinance 2023-032. This is to amend the sidewalks, bike paths, and greenways capital reserve ordinance for the transfer out of 188,100.
Any questions? Entertaining a motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hunt makes a motion, Mr. Smithman makes a second. Any discussion? All who are in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That is unanimous. And finally, for those of you who've been tracking the money.
Okay, and lastly, this also is a budget amendment to our annual operating budget. It's Ordinance 2023-034. This is to transfer from the general fund to the Lewisville-Vayanna Multipurpose Path Capital Project Fund, an amount of $165,191. So that added to the previous amount of 188,100 represents the 20% match to the project from the town.
Any questions? Entertaining a motion, please.
So moved.
So second.
Second.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion, I believe Ms. Welch makes the second. Any discussion? All who are in favor, please say aye.
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 We're waiting for the voice from above.
Aye.
That is unanimous, thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, earlier we talked about the, the way that we have accumulated money in various funds, various reserve accounts. That allows us to do projects like this as they come up. Too often, many communities have opportunities to receive either state or federal funds that require a local match, and unfortunately, they just don't have the resources to be able to do it. Our community is very fortunate indeed that when we have an opportunity to apply for a project like this that requires town match funding, and in this case, it's 20%, that we do have the reserves to be able to take advantage of that for our residents. So thank you, council. Dora, you have the next item, please.
Yes, sir.
Council before you is resolution 2023-034. This is to permit advertising of electronic auctions by electronic means only. Currently, if you were to have an electronic auction, it would have to be published in a local newspaper. This would permit advertising it on our website as the sole advertising.
Any questions for Dora?
Dora, so that will exclude any print?
Yes.
Since we're going to just website.
However, we could print if we felt like we would reach a broader audience, we're just not required to.
Great, thank you.
I'm a little torn on this one, only because, I mean, I think it's a good idea, it's the way we're going, and it certainly streamlines the process, but I think about our local newspapers, like the Clemmons Courier, who does reach a lot of our population in Louisville and Clemmons. And by doing this, we exclude any type of advertising in there that we might consider doing. Have we, I guess I should get my question, have we been using them in the past for any of these announcements or advertisements?
Well, by law, you should, if you were doing like an auction on gov deals, or even if you had an auctioneer come on site, those would, had to have been published in the newspaper, just because you do not have this ordinance in place allowing you to do it electronically only.
Okay, so I guess, council, the only thing I'm saying is we're moving to electronic, I guess, advertising notification on this. Not everybody is keenly aware of how to go about and finding those things, certainly on gov deals, the folks that watch that regularly look for the surplus items, and they bid on them, but for the local population...
Well, we would be required, so if we did an electronic auction on gov deals, we also have to tell the public where to go to vote, to find it, the web address, what the items are. There are certain criteria we have to meet, even with it being electronically advertised.
That's great, thank you, Dora, that answers my concern. Any other questions? Entertain a motion, please.
Move approval.
Second.
Dr. Sadler makes the motion, Mr. Smithman makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, that is unanimous.
Thank you. The next item for your consideration is ordinance 2023-033. This is for disposal of surplus personal property. Currently, your ordinance allows disposal up to 5,000 by the town manager. General statute does have a threshold of 30,000, and we are just requesting that the ordinance be updated to reflect that threshold.
Any questions? Entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Franklin makes the motion, Mr. Smithman makes the second. Any discussion?
I have a quick question.
I'm sorry, Dr. Sadler.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
If it's raised to 30,000, does that mean we'll be advised when we have surplus that's reaching that threshold?
Per the general statute, we would only be required to tell council when it's over, or come to council when it's over 30,000. So anything less than 30,000, the manager can dispose of, and then he has to make a report of that to the finance officer, so that it can be recorded for budget purposes.
And then, we will be made aware that that happened? I just don't want it to not be known, and I'm sure you wouldn't want that to not be known, so whenever that occurs, I don't want to delay the process if it expedites it to be able to just go ahead and do it, but I would like to be aware when that occurs.
Yes.
So noted, right, Mr. Manager? Very good. Any other questions?
Yes, please. Give me an idea of what we're getting rid of this time. I know the last time was building blocks that was left over from the wall at the church from years ago, and things of that nature, so.
Yes, a perfect example would be with the future closure of the current storage area in the path of the Great Wagon Road, there was a large supply of jacks, for example, jackstands, for example, so that would be something that...
Age components and things of that nature.
Yes, sir.
All right, I just was curious as to the nature of the stuff this time. Thank you.
Any other questions? We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Very good, that is unanimous. Mr. Manager, you have our next two items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 8G on the agenda, this is ordinance 2023-035. It's a capital project ordinance amendment for the Jack Warren Park Improvements. The town of Louisville is preparing to sign the contract for engineering and related professional services needed for the Jack Warren Park Improvements project, which is funded in part by the Parks Recreation Trust Fund, or Part F. In fact, the next item on the agenda will be that engineering agreement. However, before council can consider approval of that contract, we need to make sure we have enough money in the capital project ordinance to cover these costs. As noted at the last town council briefing, the proposed total contract value exceeds the allocation for engineering and soft costs that were shown in the Part F grant application. The grant projected these costs at $76,980, which does cover the surveying and design work under the McGill proposed McGill contract. However, we need additional funds for bidding and construction phase work, those services include things such as inspections. The total contract value is projected at $116,500. In order to move forward, we need to transfer $39,520 from the Parks Recreation Capital Reserve Fund into the Jack Warren Park Improvements Capital Project. This ordinance 2023-035 will make the necessary amendment, and staff recommends approval of the ordinances presented.
Thank you, any questions for James?
Just a quick question, after we transfer this from the Parks and Recreation Capital Reserve Fund, what will be our balance in that particular fund, roughly?
Roughly about $20,000.
Okay. And that is the capital reserve fund for any park-type project?
That's correct, sir.
For future, yeah.
Any other questions? Motion, please.
So moved.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion, Dr. Sadler makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. Second part of this.
Yes, sir. As a follow-up to the last item, this is item number 8H on your agenda. It's resolution 2023-035, the Jack Warren Park Improvements Part F. This is the McGill and Associates' proposed contract. Now, as part of the process, the town of Louisville issued a request for qualifications, or RFQ, to solicit engineering and design firms for the Jack Warren Park Improvements project. Four firms submitted qualifications packages, and a three-person committee assessed the responses. McGill Associates was selected as the highest-rated firm, so we proceeded with contract negotiations in accordance with state rules regarding procurement of professional services. The scope of work includes design phase, bidding, and construction phase services. The schedule will be at 36 weeks from start of work through design and bidding, with construction to follow thereafter. The contract value is $116,500 for all phases of the project. Staff recommends approval of the contract with McGill Associates.
Any questions? Ms. Welch makes the motion?
I'll second.
Ms. Hunt makes the second. Just one question, James. Those of us who've kind of been hanging out long enough remember when we did the design for Jack Warren Park, and I think, I think we could have done a better job in how we really looked overall at that facility, and how we maybe took into consideration where there was gonna be heavy traffic areas, where there was gonna be potential of heavy erosion, and I think we're seeing the effects of maybe not doing the land plan like we really needed to do. I know John Hannah will be working closely with us, and being aware of the experience that we've had at Jack Warren, maybe we can be sure that we're not, that won't happen in this new addition.
Yes, sir, especially with the, this will include some trail, additional natural trail areas, and we'll be well aware of those slopes to make sure to address that as part of this design. Thank you, sir.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am?
Before we move on, I did have a question for James. You mentioned the design phase and the 36 weeks, and that's the total from the design to the construction, into construction. How long of a design phase are you expecting, or do you expect? And then, I noticed that we'll probably get Parks and Rec involved in that, but what else, what other kind of public involvement will be in that design piece?
Yes, in this particular case, there was a significant amount of public input back when, first of all, there was the Parks and Recreation Plan, which included the conceptual design for this, and then during the Part F grant program, so in terms of selecting the programmatic elements, that was important. We did also build into this contract, I believe it's a total of three public sessions, including we'll have to come back to council more than once as we, for example, when we moved from the conceptual design phase, so-called schematic design, or EST, we would then move into design development. But that's a moment in time where we want to make sure to come back to council and the public, for example, to look at the amphitheater design, not just to make sure that it matches the vision, but also because there are cost implications. In addition, as we worked early on the process, we worked through the surveying and schematic design phase, it's a great opportunity for us to interact with members of the public, the Parks and Recreation Committee, in fact, we've already had some interest from at least one member of the committee who mentioned in his interview, his very, very close association with disc golf and other areas, so we want to make sure to capture some of that talent, as well as some of the other suggestions made by other members of council.
And you expect that design phase to be six weeks, or how long would be expected?
The, well, those each have different segments, so starting on the front end, the surveying phase, it'll be about six weeks for us to, they'll get a survey team out there, we'll do sight walks and visits to try and work through alignment of the course, identifying specimen trees, getting topographic information, so we can see how the amphitheater will lay out, et cetera. And that's followed by then about a four to five week schematic design phase, get that conceptual plan firmed up, and bring that back to council. Following that, there'll be a design development phase of about eight or nine weeks, and we can certainly provide a more detailed schedule as we get a little closer in there.
Thank you, very helpful.
Quickly, James, do you foresee that there will be underbrushing pretty quick, so that in relationship to the surveying and this, that, and the other, just so we can see what it looks like down through there?
Yeah, actually, that was one of the things we were talking to them about during the contract negotiations, because some of the areas in which the natural trails and the disc golf course would go, some are wooded and would require, you know, underbrushing and bush hogging, et cetera, there's some other areas that are more open, so we're trying to get a good balance between what areas need to be cut in, what areas just need to be flagged, because even after we go through, we want to get some flagging down there, so we can take a real good look at those layouts.
Yeah, I was just talking about the, you know, the underbrushing that you see done in various places, like the, we once did out here at the interchange years ago, the DOT did it for us, it was all under, road up, and then we've maintained it ever since, and all, was the deal, so.
Very good, we'll make sure to address that as we get them on their first site visit. Thank you, sir.
Very good. Alrighty. James, upcoming events, please.
Yes, sir. Now we're on to item nine on the agenda, and this is 9A. This is about upcoming events and closing, so we have some more concerts coming your way. 9A1 talks about the event on August 19th. The band is called Tell Me Lies by the Fleetwood Mac Tribute Band, of course, based on one of their songs. The concert is from 7:00 to 8:30 there on the 19th. Now, Town Hall will be closed on September 4th, Labor Day, so our office will be closed. We also want to note, and this will be out in our social media or website, that trash pickup will be delayed by one day all week during that Labor Day week. Then on September 9th, Chicago Reload, which is a Chicago Tribute Band, they'll be playing from 7:00 to 9:00 PM that night, again, that's September 9th.
Very good. Mr. Franklin, you've been to a couple of the concerts, trying to thank, I think Ms. Welch, you've been to a couple. These are absolutely outstanding. Stacy Howard on our staff absolutely needs to get super credit on these, we've had great crowds, great receptions, and if you've not heard, the Fleetwood Mac Tribute Band, it's quite a performance, so we look forward to seeing everybody at these concerts. I think we only have about three left for the season, so get your lawn chairs out early. Dora, you have some announcements for us.
Yes, sir. We wanted to give you an update on the blood drive that was held Wednesday at the Mary Alice Warren Community Center. It was extremely successful. They collected 24 units, and they had to turn away three people, just because they could not accommodate them. So we are gonna be talking with the Red Cross about getting this on a regular schedule, and also about increasing staffing, so we can accept more people.
Very good.
The next item is our summer student leadership, will be next Tuesday, August 15th. It'll be held primarily in this room. It's from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. We have 15 students who will be attending. The staff is extremely excited about this, we have been meeting several times about our presentations and the different things we want to share with the students. Just a reminder to council that from 11:15 to 12 will be a time for the council to interact with the students. This will give you an opportunity to ask questions of the students, as well as them to ask you questions. At the end of that, we will do a group photo with any elected official that would like to be in the photo with them, and then at 12 o'clock, we will have lunch. We will end the day around 2:45, 3 o'clock, with a mock council meeting, and we will be tying that into a sweet treat in the evening with them, so.
Very good, any questions for Dora? Dora, I'm sorry, I may have missed it, how many do we have?
15.
15, very good. Alrighty. Ladies and gentlemen, we are at the second opportunity. If you'd like to say anything to the council, this is a public comment period. Anyone who wants to say anything, please come forward, state your name, your address.
Good evening, Susan Fry, 165 Will Austin Court. It's nice to see you all. I just wanted to briefly mention the recent national night out festivities, I think it was wonderful. It looked like everyone really had a good time. I want to voice our appreciation for Sergeant Stringer and his duties that he had, as well as all the first responders that participated, and the other volunteers. It was a really nice, nice night, and I hope we do it again. Thank you.
Susan, yeah, I didn't realize Stringer's legs were that white until he got in his bathing suit.
I'll never get that in.
Something I can't unsee. Very good, and thanks to our Public Safety Committee and our staff for pulling that together, because I think this was, we did this last year, and this year was far more successful, and I think it was a really, really well put together event.
Oh, Mayor, please.
Yes, ma'am.
I noticed, of course, Sergeant Stringer wasn't here tonight, but he normally is.
He's in California training, the mayor said. He's in California training.
Oh, all right, just wondered, missed him.
I chose tonight to make that comment, since he wasn't here to defend himself. Anyone else? If not, council members?
Yes, I want to thank James for being so prudent with fire department and the CPR classes, thank you, he said it's gonna be in the next newsletter. And did they give you a time of when they thought that they would be ready for classes, and how many they might, you know, have room for each time?
Yes, council member, so Chief Needham over there at Louisville Fire Department, we do have the first date, November 3rd, starting at 1:00. Participants will earn a certificate offered by the American Heart Association for this training. In addition, we talked to Chief Needham about capacity. Initially, we're giving priority to the first 25 folks who submit their information, they'll submit it to our communications specialists, just their name and contact information, to Veronica Leisure, that's V-L-E-A-S-U-R-E@LouisvilleNC.net. Of course, that'll be in the newsletter, Facebook, social, other social media, and our website. Now, the chief did say if we get a lot of attendees, he may be able to pull in more instructors and increase the size, but it'll be held at the Mary Alice Warren Community Center on November, the afternoon of November 3rd.
Thank you, and Dora, will the minutes reflect that, all that information? Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Question, just out of the blue.
Since we're into a new fiscal year, and it seems like I recall that our contract with Waste Management, that we have one e-cycle event each year, do we have that? Am I out in the weeds on that? And if we do, when is that event tentatively scheduled?
Council member Franklin, we have been in contact with Waste Management regarding their remaining dates, both for bulky item and for e-cycling. I don't happen to have that date in front of me, but we'll make sure to get that out there before the expiration of their contract, but we can follow up with council and give those exact dates. I know we're a little ways off from it, but we'll get back to you.
The reason I'm asking, I just had a TV die in the last month, so you know how that goes.
Yes, sir. Will do.
I thought there'd been some discussion about having that around Christmas holidays since, what I remember is, because people often will be getting new, you know, TVs and things like that. That's what I'm remembering.
Yes, sir, Dr. Sadler, that's correct. We were hoping to have it early in the year, if folks get that big screen TV or other electronic devices around for their holiday, to be able to do it shortly thereafter. thereafter. Again, I don't have the date in front of me right now, but we'll make sure to get that back out there and get it published as appropriate.
Just curious, thank you.
Ms. Smithervin?
All right. The, the thing that we just had, the, the night out? There was plenty of trash cans, but there were not enough recycle bins, so we, Susan and I had to go looking for them. And we, we found the box ones that were there, and then, so then I saw John, and we just talked a little bit, but I think anytime we have an event that the town has, since we have trash cans for trash, let's just get some blue ones and put beside them, so that it's easy. I think, you know, the last time Waste Management was here, they talked to us about how much better it is if we recycle versus not, and then it's contaminated, but the only way that we can do a better job is by showing people, I mean, doing it ourselves. You sort of lead by example, that's one thing. Second thing is, is there anyone in the town that, or any organization that would follow up with residents to make sure that they're okay? And that's a little open, but I'll just give you an example. There's a house on Grapevine, 7525 Grapevine Road. It's a, it's a very old house. It was built in the 1800s. Well, John said, Hannah, just said that staff did a follow-up with Waste Management, going to each house to see which houses we were actually doing, so that now we'll have a list of whose house we're supposed to go to. Well, this house is on there, and right now, the only person that really knows that this person is there is the, is the garbage man, because sometimes he'll go, he said, I'll go by three, four times, because he's got it to where he has to get out and go around behind and get the trash. I think it's an elderly lady, I don't know for sure, but shouldn't there be something or a group, some way that we can make sure our residents are fine without just, I mean, it's, it's just a concern of mine, that do we have any way of knowing, or do we leave it up to the trash man to find if they're not there, or what? I don't know. I don't want to ramble, I'm just curious if there's anything we can do.
David, I can't speak to this particular situation, but I know a lot of the churches keep up with their congregations, and they're very attuned to those, their members of their congregations who do live alone. I don't know of any organization that, that actually checks on people, because it's so hard to identify who they are, because you don't know. Oftentimes, the, the churches will do food deliveries.
Right.
And so, they're right, they're currently our best tracking for folks who are living alone.
And if there is a question, will a deputy go and check?
Well, of course, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, if a neighbor has any concerns at all, they'll go by and do a, do a...
Wellness check.
Wellness check, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? Council members?
Mayor, I'd like to just congratulate the town staff and team for the efforts that, Susan had mentioned it earlier, but for the National Night Out. It was extremely encouraging to me to talk with several residents and people that were not from Louisville that attended the event, and they were just warm, it was warm and fuzzy. The heart of the town was there. I appreciate the staff and the team going out and making an effort to talk with people in the crowd, and just the professionalism and the caring hearts that you guys have were very much projected during that event. So thank you very much, all of the staff that were there.
Ditto on that.
I'll second that.
Anything else, council members? I'd just like to call your attention to an article that was in today's Clemens Courier about our own Mary Kay Brown, and it was a great profile article on her, talking about her education and how she grew up and her contributions, and if you get a chance, please read it, and, but it also reminded me, Mary Kay, I know you do watch the meetings on Channel 6, and our, our thanks to you for all you do for Louisville, both you and Tom, your